If no one really called for it? Public question, the meeting begins. New Jersey Public Meeting was enacted to ensure the rights of the public. Now advance notice of any attending meeting and public bodies on which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Assistant Administrator Board Secretary has caused notice of this meeting to be proposed by having date time placed there posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building, communicated to the Hawthorne Press, and filed with the Court of Hawthorne. All call please.
Mr. Lou Dico?
Here.
Muska?
Here.
Mr. Palouse?
Here.
Mr. Rasha?
Here.
Mr. Samberg?
Here.
Mr. Traro?
Here.
Mr. Turco?
Here.
Mr. Skier?
Here.
Please join me for the flag, so. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the vision of a great and just a. Meeting regulations. During each regular meeting, two opportunities are provided for citizens to ask questions and to make comments. During the first opportunity, early on in the agenda, the meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing items listed for approval on this agenda only. The second opportunity occurs just prior to the adjournment, when citizens may address a subject matter that is pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the school district. Persons wishing to speak must, upon being recognized, rise, sign in, state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments and questions shall be addressed to the board president or the presiding officer and shall be limited to five minutes per person. The board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they are raised, but will provide a response if them are appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of early individuals when speaking. Please note that the board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in light of the privacy rights held by those individuals. Or all of the board discards comments about such individuals and will not be responsible for such comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during this public session should carefully consider their comments, since they could be personally liable for any statements they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with district policy, the board will not officially comment or respond to any matter mentioned unless it can confirm that the matter has first been brought to the attention of the appropriate school personnel in an attempt to resolve the issue. Public, you heard? You had the items only? Alright, seeing no one, we're gonna move on, and we're gonna start our discussion on our floor. Yeah, Trudy's gonna take us through how we're gonna run this, and we have Frank and Tom, correct? Yeah, thank you guys for being here.
Happy to be here.
Happy to be here.
So we had a referendum on the meeting back in December. The committee met and asked, um, asked Rich, Scott, and I to just change a few things. One of them being that we were to add, um, on the visual sheet, we added the high school STEM lab and the culinary, and we removed upgrades to the media arts room. And then the only other item that was added was on the, um, the baseline project sheet, and we added window film to the new windows only. The existing windows, we have now, out of capital, out of maintenance reserve, we will do the film ourselves. So those are the only things that have changed since the committee met in December and asked us to make the adjustments. That's.
Did we mention that the formal questions that was posed at our last work sessions on air conditioning and total cost for the entire district and all those related questions that were contained in here as well?
And so I'll go over the three sheets. So you have, um, you have the three sheets. The first one is the gold sheet, okay, and that's basically the baseline projects, okay? And then the real one is the visual projects, and then the blue is the air conditioning. And then the smaller sheet, I guess it's like a cream color, that's just a summary of everything.
Question. The film for the new windows, are we, I know when we last talked, we weren't sure the pricing. Are we sure that the price was on target there?
Yes.
Thank you.
An important piece to the window film, I know Scott mentioned this, that, and correct me if I want this to happen, Scott, if you want to just.
No, we were just, I was speaking to Frank and Tom today, that there's a concern within the windows, that if we were to put the glazing of window film, like we're gonna contract the company to do on our, on some of our older windows, that it would void our warranty. So, they looked at pricing, and the pricing, it's a little bit more not ridiculous amount, plus this way, it'll keep the warranty in effect. Just for all the new windows, we're still talking about windows that aren't getting replaced, that are in a vulnerable area, we're gonna do those, as Trudy said, out of cap, maintenance reserve. But we didn't wanna take a chance of possibly, and then maybe Frank or Tom could elaborate, to void a warranty on a brand-new window by putting a new glazing on it that wasn't covered by the.
So essentially, what we talked to the manufacturer about is, one of their questions I was asked, can we do this from the manufacturer when we're doing windows? Since we are replacing the windows, what they are in essence going to provide is a laminated glass. So instead of putting the film on after, they're gonna take two sheets of glazing, of glass, and put a sheet of the film in between them, and manufacture it that way. So that glass is already manufactured, it's already part of the process. There is an increase in cost per square foot, but we know what that number is, we've included it here, uh, and so we have the option to do it, to add the glass with the laminate in it, and you don't have to do it later. The problem with doing it later is that certain windows, with the gla, with the film that's put on the outside, sun passes through but can't get back out. So what happens is the interior of the window cavity fills up with heat, and it breaks down the thermal break in the window, which is what prevents cold air from getting through. So that's why it has the ability to void your warranty on new windows. The simple solution is what we're proposing, and that is, get the glass pre-laminated. Uh, it won't, it will not, again, just to clarify, it's not stopping bullets, right? There's no such thing as, sorry, that's not bullets unless, you know, we put in polycarbonate glazing, which is 10 times the cost of what we're doing. Um, this will keep the window together. You can hit it with a bat, you can shoot it with a bullet, the bullet will go through, but the bat won't break it, the window won't break it, break fast, it buys time. So, it'll be manufactured by the manufacturer, and it would be part of the cost of what we're doing, no, no chance of voiding warranty.
Frank, um, question I have is that, did we price it out versus, I know you said, you know, the issue with the heat and how it.
Versus the film?
Yeah, versus the film. And are we doing this only on exterior, uh, windows that are accessible?
Correct.
Okay. We're doing them only on the most accessible portions. I don't remember what we, you know, how, how high up, whether it's the first sash or the first two sashes, uh, if there's a transom above, we're not doing that. We're just doing the, the accessible portion of that window. Um, the cost is relatively equal. Because of the labor cost involved in putting in the film later on, the cost to do it from the factory and order the glass, you're only paying for the upcharge of the glass. They still have to put the glass in, they still have to do that anyway. So the upcharge for the glass is essentially the same as what it would cost somebody to put the film on.
Great, thank you.
Can I just ask you generally a question? What was the number, the monetary number of what the taxpayer was rating it at? Remember? The bonds that were.
Twenty million dollars.
Yes. What was, I didn't bring that paper.
It was like nine, nine, five.
Nine?
Nine. It was high nine, it's almost, we could've maybe got to ten.
Yes. Because we were at our original number of thirteen, I believe it was, an four million over, what was going to be.
Okay. I have another question then. I was gonna ask one of them, see if anybody else wanted. I, you know, play a little ping pong. Um, are we, can I jump around, or? Okay, okay. Um, on the blue sheet, the air conditioning, I have two questions. Number one, what type, this seems only one type of air conditioning was considered, and was that, these are not window units, I assume, because this whole price is far too much for that. And we are not able to do window units?
Window units do not meet code.
Okay.
Or ventilation air. There's, there's two things you have to handle in a classroom. You have to provide ventilation air, and you have to provide heating and heating and/or cooling. If you put a window unit in, it does not address the issue of ventilation air. It's not, um, people do it, so, you know, it's, it's acceptable, but it's not acceptable by code, as a code compliant measure, to provide air conditioning.
So these are like those Mitsubishi units that are.
No, these would be full, these would actually serve two purposes, and it's good, it's good to bring it up. This would replace, in classrooms, we would be looking to replace your existing antiquated unit ventilator units that currently only have heat. So the intent would be to kill two birds with one stone. We're gonna replace older and outdated equipment with newer equipment that is capable of providing air conditioning.
So it's central air?
It's, it's, each room, each unit, each room would have its own unit. I would liken it to a hotel unit.
Okay.
Right? So when you go into your room, you hit the thermostat, you can put it on cool, hot, whatever, but it's a self-contained unit within that room, within that space. Each classroom would have one, if they're larger, they might have two, or a larger-sized one, but, um, that would be the, the most efficient and economical way to do this. That's what we've done in multiple schools prior. Um, what we should note is that by, by replacing the older unit ventilators with these unit ventilators, we're able to get the ventilation air requirement, we're able to, um, replace an older piece of equipment, and there's potential for us, because we're replacing an HVAC, piece of HVAC equipment, there's potential for us to get dead service aid. Where, if we were simply putting in air conditioning units, dead service aid would not be allowed. It's not approved. It's not something that's approvable. The fact that we're gonna say we're replacing an existing piece of HVAC equipment, the potential for us to get dead service aid is much, much higher, and a much higher percent than what we probably get.
Do the units have an impact on the electricity, like we'd be paying a higher, so that is going to increase or decrease?
With any electric, with any air conditioning, your electrical load increases significantly.
Okay.
So we would need to look at, obviously, we have electrical upgrades in this plan too, to account for the increase in electric that we're gonna require. It is going to increase operating costs. I mean, it depends on how low you set it, it's like home, right? You set it at 68 and let it run all day long, your heating bill's going, your cooling bill's going up. So it depends on how these are programmed and how they're set up in the system, um, but yes, it's going to increase operating costs.
I'm not sure if Frank is the right one to add, ask, but what, uh, what is the definition of the core air conditioning? It says, for under the referendum scenario totals, the first option is baseline.
Oh, on the green sheet.
Yeah, baseline plus original core air conditioning, I know, does that mean like gyms, like common areas?
Yes.
Okay, so it was gyms and.
Auditorium and a high school.
Auditorium and a high school.
Media center.
Media center, cafeterias, it was a larger space.
So like two or three larger rooms in each building?
Correct.
Have the, on the blue sheet, the first, like on the.
Oh, awesome, okay.
It breaks it out for you, and then you can go into each school, you know, has the core area.
Got it. So the first couple in each group is the core.
Exactly.
Okay.
If that helps.
Thank you, that does help.
Just a follow-up, I have this question. So Frank, the way you explained how the air conditioning is gonna be in a larger area, like in, for example, auditorium, would it be the same system, or would that be a more traditional setup?
No, no, that'll be a rooftop unit, that's different. We're gonna replace those systems in kind as possible with, they'll just have a condenser and a coil inside the unit, as opposed to, you know, doing it another way. Duct work and removing ceilings and putting duct work and getting things into each of the classrooms, that's the most expensive way for us to do it. In this particular case, what it's going to do is, it's gonna take up some square footage in the, in the room, it's a, it's like putting in a cabinet in the corner, and it's a three-foot by three-foot cabinet, maybe, but you're, you may lose a window bay in order to get the, the louver and the fresh air, but the other unit ventilator goes away, it's replaced with bookcases, and the room, you know, is the same. It's not like we're gonna have to run duct work down the hallway and then branch off into each of the classrooms, which is labor and cost. This way, you know, we can either have a couple of options. We can do ducted into the room itself from the unit, or we can do what we, we call a free plenum, which is just a, a plenum that blows air out into the classroom, it's not ducted, it's less expensive, and, you know, it still provides the distribution in the classroom that needs.
Question. Where, where is the control for the air? Is that done in classroom, or can be done in a central location?
Well, each unit has its own, own control unit, uh, in, in place. It can be hooked up to the BMS, so you can have it remotely, depending upon if, you know, obviously, we have to upgrade digital controls everywhere, and then you can connect it to that.
But that's not part of the referendum? That's not, that's.
No, I'm asking for, I'm just thinking ahead, you know.
Right.
But just so you know, that's not part of the one you were talking about.
Right.
It'll be included in his room.
Right? Right now, it's independent in each room.
If I may, just one other question regarding, you made comment that inside the classrooms, that because it's a dual unit, would be potentially offset by dead services, would that be an issue within the core areas, because it's just an AC unit?
Yeah, core areas, core areas, if we're replacing the air conditioning, if we're replacing the rooftop unit, we're gonna replace the rooftop unit. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna put this in a, in a manner in which we're gonna attempt to get dead service aid. We're not simply putting an air conditioning unit on the roof.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's the intent. Everything that we're gonna do is to make sure that you get the maximum amount of state aid possible.
I always say that because it says AC, so I don't want that to mean this.
Frank, if you don't mind, I'd like to go back, but what Abby mentioned about, you know, cost increases, obviously, we're adding, um, but when we're, when we're changing all these units and having them more efficient, do you think we'll pick up a little bit of savings maybe on the heat side, because they're gonna be a more efficient unit?
I do, and I, and I would think that you would save more if we were doing controls. The controls are gonna be your biggest savings when it comes to running these units and letting them operate. But yes, there will be some savings of, of, based on efficiency. It's not really, you know, if you're replacing.
Hard to measure.
Lighting is, you know, you get, you get a huge savings difference from lighting. Heating, you know, we are replacing some of the windows, you're gonna pick up a little gain from that, you're gonna pick up a little gain from, from the efficiency of the units, but when you do the controls, that's when you're really gonna see a big difference.
Can you, can you estimate as to what the controls will cost? Just have an idea. Half a million, twelve million?
Controls are pretty expensive. I mean, you know, we've estimated them for jobs at a quarter of a million, you know, quarter of a million per building. It could be expensive. So, the fact that these units run independently.
You actually did put it in here, didn't you?
I didn't, Tom was just showing me.
Yeah, no, we still have the controls listed in as part of.
For everyone?
Again, as part of the, um, not as the core space, but the additional areas.
Is it there, hung down on the blue sheet? Yep.
Oh yeah, it says, yeah. Direct control.
Yep.
I apologize. Yes, we do. We have stuff. Yeah. So you can see, we have 700,000 for the high school, we have 400,000, so these numbers are substantial, but yes, and you will save, you, we will get a little bit more savings. But again, your, your cost for electric is gonna go up significantly, but you don't have that. And as we get closer, and we start to do the design, we could, we could show you some operating numbers. Engineer could calculate some operating costs.
With this, I was on the committee for this, and that was one of the things that was, this cost of, nobody knows what the hidden cost of all the electric's gonna be, and in light of how tight the budgets are, 2% cap and all that, it's one thing, the number just for the air conditioning, but then on the back end, especially if you go for whatever number, you're gonna air condition everything, okay, that might be covered by the referendum, and you might get a lot back from the state, but then, moving forward, you know, nobody knows what the impact is gonna be on the budget, but you know there's gonna be some type of, you know, considerable impact of all the.
Maintenance program, and the air program moving forward, plus your increase in occupancy.
And addition of burdening aboard 10, 15 years from now, when they need to be replaced. That's a big factor, so.
Once you have it, you've got.
I'm just, I mean, I'm just bringing it up, 'cause I was all for doing all the air conditioning in the beginning, and then, that's something I really didn't know or think about, um, but it's something very serious to think about, just not the number that's here, but to keep it running, keep it going.
I would love to get some rough numbers, just an idea, a couple of thousand dollars is, you know, higher.
And then you could give us.
It depends on what, or I don't.
Give us your, um, electrical bills a year, for the most reason. We'll show them to the engineer, we'll have them run some tests.
I mean, you don't doubt saving usage to a certain degree, everything's relevant. But the electrical factor, you can't, you can't measure anything. We don't need to be rocket scientists to understand it, it's gonna be a hell of a lot of money.
Yeah, and they can turn it on and off themselves from within the classroom?
That's what I was gonna say.
I mean, I know that a teacher, a friend of mine in Ridgewood, they're told, you cannot turn it on unless it's X or Y.
Block boxes. From that, from that standpoint, any thermostat that we put in the classroom can only be moved one degree. They're placebo.
Because people could have it on all year round.
Oh, sorry.
No, but that makes people better, because you could, you have teachers that could get hot in the middle of the winter, my classroom next door, she comes in all the time turning on the air conditioner. Nobody knows she's doing that. So, I mean, it, I agree with you, Bruce, the unknown costs make me very nervous.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't considering that in the very beginning, when we were like, yeah, air conditioning, everything we need it, and I know the kids are affected by it, but that's, I don't know, that's a big concern for me, of the hidden cost of the.
An initial, an initial cost that our engineer had suggested to us, without doing the building analysis, was potentially a dollar, maybe a dollar fifty a square foot per year. So, you know, if you look at, uh.
Additional.
Additional. So if you look at the high school, if it's 143,000 square feet, potentially, that cost per year. And again, that's without a building analysis.
Right. And I think that's, I think that's a very, very conservative measure. I think that, I think the best way is not to shoot from the head, but to kinda talk about, if you show us what you're paying for, what your usage is, based on what we've done on other projects, the engineer could calculate, it's gonna be 25, 35, 45% higher. You know, and he'll give you that number. I would rather do that than tell you it's a dollar fifty square foot times 143,000 square feet, that's a dollar.
And is that per year?
Right, what's. That would be the annual charge, I guess.
But you're not running an AC all year, right?
Right, but you're not, your, your increase in the, in your electrical is not, your peak demand's gonna be one month. You know, July, end of July, beginning of August, you know, four, four, six weeks.
We're not in session. School's not in session, even less. So then are you dividing that number by 12?
Let, before we run.
Right, you understand what we're, what we're thinking, guys.
I do, I do know what you're thinking, let, what, if, because he's gonna see what your usage is, and what a peak demand is for heat and, and what you have now, let us compare that against what we've done in the past, and give you a little bit more understandable numbers. I'd rather not shoot from the.
Well, in light of trying to move forward with this thing, 'cause it is January 2nd, right? I think, are we in agreement, committee-wise? You want?
Well, we have high hopes that tonight, we would maybe, you know, come to a decision of, you know, projects in a dollar amount, so we can try and move forward. I don't know if we'll do that, but that would be a goal.
Well, let's talk about the air conditioning first. Recommendation committee was to Sheldon.
The hall of it, even the core?
Except for the, not the core.
Okay.
Except for the core, right?
Right, and, go ahead.
No, I just wanna make sure, the committee, right, that's correct. And, and the reasons were, were moving forward, the unknown, and it is an unknown, additional utility cost, number one. Number two, to reiterate, the burden you're gonna put on future boards, 10, 15 years from now, and I only know that, just now in Prospect Park, one building, to replace all the HVACs, 2.7 million dollars.
And is that a life span for those units, 10 to 15 years?
Well, they're at 17 and 18 right now, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I wanted to ask a question.
Sure.
Is the burden, and I guess the question that I have is, if you're gonna replace those unit ventilators anyway, whether they're air conditioning or heating, it's still gonna be a burden to you. Maybe the increase in cost to replace them with an HVAC unit might be your net difference, but you, that board 15, 20 years from now, is still gonna have the burden of replacing HVAC equipment, whether it's air conditioning units or heating only. Right now, these units that you have are old enough, right now, your units right now are old enough where it's time to replace them. So we're gonna replace those units with HVAC and air conditioning units, heating and air conditioning units. Okay. Once we replace those units, their life is gonna be 15, 20, 25 years. So 25 years down the line, you're still gonna have to look, that board is still gonna have to replace those units.
It's at the same cost?
Yeah, I, I think, I, well, listen.
Doing your sole purpose of heat and AC, or?
Yeah, well, you're, you're always gonna do heat and AC, and from this point on, you're, you're not gonna go backwards. And number two, who knows what the cost of stuff's gonna be 25 years from now?
Could be a lot more efficient.
It could be, could be more efficient, you know, so, you have a lot, you know, if I knew that, I'd be, you know.
Right, exactly.
But, but again, I don't want, I know that you're saying it's a burden for other boards, but that burden in some fashion or another to replace these things is gonna be there 20 years from now.
Okay, fair point.
Because those units are due, some of those units are.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you're gonna get older units as we, as we replace, you know, you're gonna get units that we didn't replace this time around that are gonna be going, you know, in 10, in five years, and, you know, so there's gonna be this continuous cycle of, of facilities replacement, and part of the reason that you guys are in the spot you're in now, and you, not just you, but every district, is because education comes first and facilities come last, it's just, that's the way it goes. So we, we put as much as, defer as much as we can, defer as much as we can, and at the end of the day, that's where it comes down to. So, I, I don't want that to be the only, John, I'll give you the poll question.
I'd like to say something, 'cause I'm, you know, always, let's do the air conditioning, let's do everything we can, but I think, and it's shocking to myself to even say it out loud, but with, in lieu of the article that came out that taxes are being reassessed, and the whole town is up in arms, I think we really need to focus on bearable is what we really need, because it's not gonna pass. Like, we're, we're not gonna get more people in this town to have their homes reassessed and have to pay more taxes, and then give us extra money for stuff we don't need. So I think we really, we're spending a lot of time on this, but I don't think it's gonna happen. So I think let's, let's go to what we really, really need, and, and kinda go there.
At the same token.
And it pains me to say it, but I'm saying.
But at the same token, for whatever, I think it's been properly vetted, I mean, right? Because we had a several of obligation that wanted to.
Okay.
And it has been.
And there's no argument, I mean, you know, it's, it's very logical at this point that we can't move forward with air conditioning, I mean, there's just no question about it. So, we did our, our homework, we appreciate all of the numbers, but I think at this point we have to do what's best for the taxpayer and for our kids. It's not a fun area, like, not on that.
Unfortunately, we have that reassessment that's happening this year, it's a tough year.
I think we're gonna be in trouble, so I think we really gotta focus.
I just, that's one last question about the air conditioning. When it comes to core, it seems as though cafeteria and library are only considered for the middle and high school, and then only gymnasiums for the elementary schools.
The reason is because some of the, almost all the media centers have.
That was my question, I didn't know if it was existing.
Yeah, I mean, Roosevelt, they have window units, but they're air conditioning. You know, we were trying to figure out other spaces that aren't, and like at Roosevelt, the CAF already is air conditioning, the gym is not. Jefferson, the gym is not, so it just depended on the building, that's why we selected.
So it seems as though the elementary media centers are already window air conditioning.
Correct. That's why we, we're trying to find other spaces that we're already, that we can add That's why we, we're trying to find other spaces that we're already, that we can add at a smaller, a little, you know, less, lesser cost. Back to the times point about the, you know, the.
Well, I will say that in lieu of air conditioning, all the rooms, that there is a need for common space air conditioning, because on the hotter days, the teachers do circulate the students in and out of those cold spaces, and if someone has one of those, it's very difficult to do. I mean, you know, kids get fifteen minutes in and then fifteen, and then they go back to their classroom, it's even hotter after coming out of the air conditioner. So I, I mean, I do think that's a decent alternative to have the core spaces being an option.
The committee's going to scrap all of the air, what was that recommendation? Scrap all of the air conditioning, or is it just?
The one, the one thing we were talking about when we were at committee was we still thought about the second question for just air conditioning alone. So we leave it up to the taxpayer, let them make this decision, because we're, we're out here trying, you know, knocking our heads against the wall, trying to figure it out. You know, we know we need the baseline, we know we need that stuff, and we think we'd like to have the air conditioning, but we don't want to overburden the referendum with that, because people are so passionate about yes and no on this. Give it to them, let them make the decision, and we'll be okay with it, because then it's on them, not on us.
So are you saying that core is associated with the baseline, or you?
So, so to clarify that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Boo and the rest of the guys on the committee, we would, we would, the only air conditioning that we would consider in the baseline project would be the high school.
Auditorium.
Auditorium, that would be the only thing, the second question would then encompass the core, the additional core items, okay? The other larger spaces, that would be the second question, not, not the thirteen million, it would be the smaller number.
Fourteen. The twenty-three, twenty-nine, fourteen.
Right, whatever that, whatever the amount is for the, for the core projects. She said, the, the core, the core air conditioning was two point seven.
Two twenty-five.
There you go, so that would be the second question.
And part of the reasoning behind that, if I remember correctly, please, if I'm wrong, was that we literally talked about, as you just said, teachers and children going into a gym or whatever. Oh, it's really nice in here, and then you got to go back to that classroom. How comfortable or uncomfortable are they going to be?
So hypothetically, if that's, if we, if we pull it out, all right, so then we're looking at, if, if you look at this sheet. Yes, so a sheet, the top line, baseline projects plus original core air conditioning is eighteen point eight million. So if we back out the core, now we still have to discuss the visual impact.
Right, right.
If you back out the core, you're at your sixteen. We're putting the visual impact back in, so we're back at.
We're back at what?
Twenty-three.
Your baseline plus visual impact.
Correct.
And then your second question would be for two point seven, like I said.
That's, that's the kind of the road we were walking.
I'm sorry, I just, I want to make sure I'm, I'm clear on this, the ten million that we said, or approximately ten million, are we looking at the cost after debt aid, or are we looking at the total project cost when we say ten million? We said that the taxpayer won't feel anything, we keep around nine point five million. But we're saying that the baseline projects are sixteen million, the ten million after our debt services, is it, is that ten million, the ten million I'm thinking about?
The ten million that we're talking about is everything combined, it's both.
After the debt services, so.
No, we were at thirteen.
I'm sorry about the first line, the baseline projects.
Right, no, but to, to go back, you're talking about what the number was to make it seamless, before we got to this.
Yeah.
So that original number, because we were at, what, seven something, low seventy million, less than forty percent, so that number was what, nine change?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's almost that million.
Less than half, so yeah, you're almost at the ten million. That was to keep it seamless.
So if we did every baseline project, taxpayer feels no impact?
Oh, no, we're way above.
We're way over that.
Nine.
Unfortunately, we're way above.
Because the number was.
To keep it seamless.
The number was.
That's what I'm asking, so it's sixteen million, that's what I'm looking at.
Yes.
So our baseline is sixteen.
Yes.
And it's not seamless at that point.
Right, I understand.
That had a lot to do.
If that's sixteen, we're ten, or nine.
Correct, correct.
Tanya, that had a lot to do, Tom came in and spoke to us with materials going up, labor costs decreasing. There was a number of reasons why, our base that we had initially, it was almost four million dollars more at that time. And then we played with it, we played with it, we added projects, we took some stuff away, we hit and out, and then that's what we came up with.
So, do we have a number of what just our baseline projects on average would raise the taxpayer?
So this first line, Tanya, the sixteen, that line?
Yeah, I'm just curious what just our baseline projects would mean to an average taxpayer.
I was under the same impression you were, that it was the after service aid.
That's why I wanted to clarify, which one.
So, so I have it based on twenty million dollars, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so based on twenty, for the entire project, okay? So, you know, it's twenty million, then we take out the debt aid, doesn't matter, we're basing it on the twenty million, okay? Because when the finance people did it, they pulled out the debt aid and everything, okay? So, so for the first year tax implication, and it will go down a little bit the second year, but for the first year tax implication at a hundred, an average house of one eighty-two is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand sixty-eight cents.
And that's gross twenty, right?
Correct.
What's seventy-eight?
Sixty-eight.
Yep.
And then at three hundred, it would be two hundred and ninety-four dollars and twelve cents. And at four hundred thousand, value of the house, would be three hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixteen cents. The second year, those numbers decrease a little bit, and then they stay that way. The second year tax implication for a house assessed at one eighty-two is a hundred and forty dollars and eighty-six cents. For three hundred thousand, it's two thirty-one eighty-seven, and for four hundred thousand, it's three oh nine sixteen. Now, these numbers were calculated a bunch of, a few months ago, so once we know exactly what we're doing, then I will reach out to the financial guys, because interest rates have been increasing.
And this is all in addition to what they're paying now, this is all addition.
This is addition, but that will, but it could, it may change a little based on, you know, how it can be.
So, so. Well, clarify that.
I want to, yeah, that's right, exactly what I want to do.
A hundred and four, let's just say a hundred and forty, and let's just sleep with that number. People that are now paying a hundred, that hundred's going to go away, that hundred is going to become one forty.
In the second year.
In the second year.
Right.
So in essence, the taxes are going up forty dollars, that's what you were looking for.
Yes, yes, in a roundabout way, but you got, you got, you got, you got where I want to go.
But it's the net increase, that's what you're looking for, the net.
The net, see, that, that, that's, that's a good way to put it.
Tanya wants to know what.
I don't, not what.
Okay, so this is.
That's not how they're selling it.
Okay, this is important.
What they said is this, the taxes will go, will increase this amount. They're pulling, this is what the financials said, that based on the number that's dropping off and the new money, this is how much.
Let me ask it a different way. We don't have a referendum go through until the current one expires.
I hear you saying.
What will the tax impact be on a hundred and eighty-two dollars, on a hundred and eighty-two thousand?
You mean tax savings?
No.
No.
What will the new monthly or yearly impact be on a house of a hundred and eighty-two thousand once the current referendum expires?
That's what I want to know, is it going up a hundred and seventy-eight dollars, or is it going up?
It's going up a hundred and seventy-eight.
In year one.
So for example. So for example, okay? The existing debt, this is on a four hundred thousand dollar house.
Yep.
Okay, is three hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixteen cents. Once we have the new debt, it's going to be five hundred and sixty-four dollars in the second year. So what's the difference in that?
A hundred and eighty dollars, a hundred and eighty-one dollars.
So it's, it's going up, it's increasing.
So it's not an additional?
So it would stay at three eighty-three if the referendum that we're talking about stays at nine and a half.
Correct.
Okay.
Their taxes would not increase.
That would not increase, okay. And if we did nothing, they would save three eighty-three. I mean, that's all, I just want everybody to be clear.
Their taxes are increased, people's taxes are increased.
But they wouldn't save, because we would have to increase the budget to get these projects done.
No, 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 I'm.
She's, she needs to.
Some of us all need to be clear on that.
Right.
And then once we have an actual number, then I will have them come in and they can go over.
So Trudy, so to recap, the numbers that you read will be some twenty million dollars.
Correct.
And that was net increase.
Me and Tanya, the other number that was discussed too was, if you look at that first line, you say, well, it's not sixteen million, if we get back, you know, the forty percent, it's ten million, and just those people on the committee too, but I think I'm correct with this. It says the full number when they go to vote on it for the referendum. You know, like, they go in the voting booth, it's going to say sixteen mil, even though, you know, hopefully if we get forty percent back, it will be, it will be ten.
But they're getting taxed on sixteen.
They're getting taxed on the net.
They're voting on the sixteen.
They're voting on the.
But this is still based on the existing. But when they calculate this, the financial people, who know that, what, how much is going back?
And in the booth, it's going to say sixteen million, but it's also going to say, but it's also going to say, you're getting five points, five point eight million, debt service aid, which reduces the burden. So it will say that in the booth, absolutely.
Yeah.
The way the question's written.
The question will say that.
That's good to know.
Thank you for clarifying that, what you were talking about. And you're going to put that all.
Well, I was going to say, that's up to us to.
You're going to put that all over the place before the election.
Right, right.
It's up to us.
You know, that's, that's the, the difference, whatever that number is at the end, whatever that net number that they're being passed on, that's the number they're buying. So like, I, I'm sorry, one last thing, and we'll know what your debt service is as soon as we get DOE approval. You'll know exactly what you're going to get, it's not like we don't know when the referendum happens, you're going to know what DOE's approved for debt service aid.
As far as the reassessment, do we know when that's potentially going to be in place, because that's going to have a direct, I mean, this year, two thousand and nineteen.
That's what I mean, yeah.
But when are people going to?
Because that's a big.
Twenty, twenty.
But they don't think people are going to know.
They're going to, sometime this year, you can expect it won't impact.
Right, right, but people won't know how much they're increasing or decreasing when they go out to vote for the referendum.
They're going to ask for less or for less.
So two thousand and nineteen, we're still working with this year's numbers regardless of what the reassessment value is.
How I read the article.
Just being, to know what we're hearing, the, the, the only thing I'm hearing out of everybody, I'm not hearing much about the visual impact part, because it sounds like we're all kind of set under this twenty million, is, is the visual impact something that?
Well, I'm glad, well, that's the next thing I need to talk about, because I think that's, that's very important. Could I just finish up one thing, like?
Sure.
Uh, can we just finalize from, I want clarification, the way I understand is that uh, we're going to scrap the air conditioning, except, and consider a second question on the core, uh, the core projects, or is that where we are right now? I, I don't think we've made any final decision, we've got a lot of other stuff to talk about, but that, you know, that was what was discussed, yes. I don't know how anybody else feels, I'm just curious.
No, I agree, that's where I think we are right now.
I mean, we should move forward, find out where we are.
Just to follow up real quick, what you just said, I reiterate, I said it before, I got to reiterate again, especially now with this revaluation out here, it is important, Mr. The President. When you sit with the mayor and town council, or represent a group of his board, to discuss what's going on, you're going to need their support. That being said, yes, I agree with you.
I do too, just one last small thing. How necessary is the AC and the auditorium at the high school? Is it working now?
There is not.
There isn't any.
So why is that the only AC put in the, the baseline data?
Well, it's been on this, it's been discussed here for years.
I understand that, but I just find, if we're really going to scrap all the AC, I, I say we scrap all the AC.
Well, I, I think part of it is, you know, graduate, A, graduations are ranging inside, it's brutal, but they are the whole one. Number two, that's a beautiful auditorium, if you're air conditioning, you could garner some revenue from it. There's enough dancing schools around, there's maybe some various companies around, put on plays, you know, it could, not pay for itself, I'll never say that.
Right, it's five hundred and forty thousand dollars.
I think it's something that's really needed to be done for a long, long time. That's.
Those are ideas.
I hear all of the reasons that you're saying, but it's half a million dollars.
It was two fifty six years ago. That's just my one thing.
No, I, I totally understand, I mean, you know, my god, they have competition, we want to brand this high school, because there's air conditioning, I get it, I do.
All right, can we move on to visual impact, or do you want to make a decision on this, what you want to include air conditioning?
I'd like to just do the visual impact.
I think that's a great idea.
Is the green sheet, is your visual? This is all the stuff that was presented to us across my floor.
It's a green sheet.
Well, this has been pared down from the original, correct?
It's been pared down and out.
Right, pared down, the original number was somewhere eight and change, I believe, we're down to six million.
So six dollars.
Almost seven.
Right, almost seven.
Three.
Well, six, all your total, right, six to six dollars. So if I could, just, just a brief intro, with this, the reason that we brought this up anyway was because with a referendum, when you're trying to, you put this referendum out, what most people don't see doesn't really bring value to the referendum, right? So the intent, when you try to do this, is we try to put something in for everyone. The high-profile projects as opposed to boilers, roofs, most people don't see that and don't really, you know, care about, quite frankly. So what they see are those big projects, the media center, the, our art and music, the technology, the, the science labs, STEM, STEAM, all these big words that, you know, these big programs that are out there, they're not just words. It's, it's happening all over, it's happening around you. So, you know, the big facilities are big impact, they're high impact, high visual impact, and unfortunately, you have a need for those spaces, you really have a need for those, those science labs. You're, you're, and, you know, I could keep going through the slides, and you saw them last time. You know, the, just the older, the media center, media, media arts room, the media center with the, you know, antiquated lighting and the poles down the whole center of the space, the, for, for power, flooring, finishes, you know, with a little bit of, so a little bit of, of work in new lighting and efficient lighting and finishes and, and new casework and layouts. You know, again, creating, you know, media centers out of older libraries can really be a big draw, big impact. These are spaces where districts were in now, they're sending their kids to the media centers as opposed to going to study hall. You know, they can read a book, they can work on a computer, they can, you know, do what needs to be done in these media centers, so it's certainly, it's certainly something that, you know, could have a different feel, a different, a different look, colorful, bright, warm, inviting spaces that you, you have a variety of media outlets to choose from. You know, people think that because, you know, the technology groups go away, and that's not the truth. But they're, two thousand and fourteen, New Jersey came up with technology standards that are being pushed, you guys are, you know, you have to have the facilities to be able to do what they're asking you to do, maker spaces, especially for the elementaries and the middles. Being able to, you know, create these warm and inviting places. So when you walk into a space like this, you can't help but see, wow, this is, this is great, we've got, we've got our bang for our buck here. So it's definitely, it's definitely something that, you know, people will look at and will say, hey, I, I, you know, I want that for my kid. It's something that we should have in Hawthorne. So that's the reason that we talked about, you know, having spaces that look like this. You know, flexible furniture, great lighting, you know, new few hoods, new casework, the ability to move the room around in, in a variety of different ways. STEM labs, STEM labs, STEAM, you know, areas that they can create and experiment and collaborate. You know, science labs that look like this, mobility technology, twenty-first century science labs. You know, we talked about visual arts, the arts classroom, so, you know, not to go through everything, because I know that you, you have other things to deal with, but these are the, the, this is why we put these visual impact items in, because they can help you bring this to success, this is what people want to see. So everything that Frank has just said, and just to further that, we, we're constantly talking about losing students to PCTI, everything that they're doing in a thirty million dollar edition. I think we can all agree that all of our schools, a lot of this portion of the schools are still in original state, in original condition. They need to be upgraded, they need to have modern, be modernized. Doing some of these visual impacts are an immediate improvement that people will see immediately. When they walk right in, things are going to pop. It's certainly not going to put us on the same playing field as PCTI, but I certainly think it's going to help, we're going to be able to offer more. I don't know what the right combination is of what we should do, what we shouldn't do, but that's just a little bit more of a thought process that goes into some of the visual impact items.
What I like about the visual impact, the impact of the visual projects is that, you know, we consider the air conditioner as an additional cost. As nice as that would be, the, is it something that you benefit from year-round, right?
It directly impacts kids. You know, the roof, the window, that indirectly, indirectly impacts kids. These projects directly impact our students and instructional, you know, our instructional spaces versus a roof. Yeah, it keeps the kids from getting wet, the roof's leaking, I get that, but, um, but that's, you know.
I think the important thing too that Frank said is, where these spaces are is where everybody goes. So it's just not one, you know, we're going to redo one classroom, let the fifth grade go there, whatever it's going to be. Like, this is, every single kid in the school will go to the cafeteria, go to the media center, um, so they all benefit from it. It's not just one grade or one little, one little group, I'm sorry, I think.
That's pretty much, right along the same lines, is that, you know, that everybody's going to be, be affected by this in a positive way. This, this is all year-round, where as much as we want the air conditioning, we're going to keep comparing, you know, that, that's only for a month or two. This is all year-round, and rather than increasing the cost of electricity here, whereas we hopefully retain more of our students here, which could actually be, you know, saving us a little bit of money each year.
And the other point, with the STEM and the STEAM, one thing that's in the original one is, I forget what they called it, but basically a one-to-one for every middle school student, one-to-one for every high school student, and then along with going into all of these spaces, you know, with their, with their devices, and I've said this before, this is nothing new, but I think we would be a K through twelve STEM academy school, and from age five until age fourteen, or, you know, from kindergarten to eighth grade, you would be able to offer something else that. you would be able to offer something else that other people can't offer, because they're not waiting until high school to get into STEM. You know, they're doing it from when they're five years old, all the popping, having the facilities, you know, having all the technology there.
I have a quick question, Frank, I apologize, I think I missed a meeting, I don't remember any of this, so I think I wasn't here for one meeting, but.
Yes, you're correct.
Okay, I'm like, oh god, I'm blacking out! So, pardon me if you answered this already, but say take a project like Gymnasium Graphics. What construction is involved warranting twenty-eight thousand dollars, so Chaling Lane or Vint right now?
And that's okay, I think, one of the things, the reason the graphics are in here is because they're low-cost and high-impact. Right? So, we can transform, this is Ramsey's cafeteria, it was white walls. We transformed this into a bright space, kids love going to, we changed up some furniture, put a new ceiling in, some new lighting, but the graphics portion of this entire project was twenty thousand dollars. The graphics.
And the printing and the?
The print, the graphic design, the layout, all of that is graphics, it's a final applique that goes on the wall. And, you know, this was a classroom, science lab, we put the periodic table on the wall. In the, in the other one, it's a lobby outside of the Spartan Gymnasium in Ocean.
But that, but is the STEM, the STEM on Lakeland?
Corner, like the corner.
The Lakeland, that's there.
This was, this was a non-discripted corner in the hallway, they just put a STEM lab in for back-to-school night, we were able to generate this graphic, they put it up within five days, it cost twenty-five hundred dollars. But look at what it does to that corner. It's, it's low-impact, high, high, high-impact, low-cost.
Even had the flyer extended, sure.
Yeah, even put everything in, but we, we put the, we're doing more of this now because it is low-cost. And because the districts we work with, they all have budgets to deal with, but what can we do that really brightens up an otherwise dull hallway? Yeah, we could've replaced all the lighting in that hallway and done a whole bunch of stuff. But to do a graphic that they put up in a day, it took us a few days to design, it cost twenty-five hundred, and they installed it. So, those are things that we're adding to what we're showing you in the referendum to say, we could transform that gymnasium without putting up sheet rock, without putting up walls, but just by transforming it with graphics that create a warm and inviting space to be in. Low, low, low-cost.
Thank you, Frank.
Also here's investment culinary. Let me make a suggestion. Since I know you're the donating type of. With this pending. Since there'll probably be gatherings in each school. And if we control where everyone enters on a given night, it would be beautiful to take that Lakeland thing for twenty-five hundred dollars and do it. Prior to people hearing.
As a visually.
I am, I am open to anything. And say to them, this is what's gonna be.
I think it's a great idea.
Where we're gonna host the first meeting, we should have a visual impact, each, each school. We'll go to Jefferson, we'll go to Lakeland, five schools, twenty-five hundred, it's twelve thousand five hundred. You've got that in your pocket right now.
I'll donate all my, all the design time, even that paper design. I'll donate it all.
Whatever, whatever you want, we'll donate it all. Because that would go a long way.
Good thing you're recording this, right?
You don't have to, it's all good.
Just teasing.
I know, I know.
That's a fantastic idea. The only negative thing is, and not to beat Debbie Downer, but, you know, when we go back to our numbers, now we're back at that twenty-three million.
Which is over the numbers Trudy gave us for twenty.
Correct. Correct. It's not a tremendous increase, it's, I don't know, I'll let the mathematician figure it out.
Fifteen percent.
Then the other issue while we're looking at all these things that we need to think about is we still have contemplation of September or December, to talk. Now, for sure, pending reevaluation. I don't know how everyone else feels, but it's probably better to do it sooner than later. Get it done in September, because as December, everybody's gonna be cringing when January one, 2020 comes along and.
I think they said the highest rate of positive return for September.
September, yeah.
Yeah.
Frank, Frank, she missed that, but. It's, and I probably haven't here, but the highest rate of return for referenda is December. The most amount of referenda is in September. So, it's kind of a funky, most people go out in September with the highest rate of return, the highest passing rate is December. The highest of all the passing rates is March, but there are the fewest referendums, so, you know, the numbers get skewed.
And what, what are they basing on? Why does it pass more in December than in September?
Well, September, September's bad only because, and it's not bad, it's because everybody's on vacation over the summer, so how do you get that word out to everybody that's there? You have two, three weeks in September to really get the word out.
I don't know about you, but for December, I'm sick of spending.
I know.
But that's why the referendums are first Tuesday and then the last Tuesday.
So, getting people to meetings, I feel like between Thanksgiving and then.
End of the year.
It'd be tricky as well.
And I agree with you, and the other issue is that you're not gonna just start this in September with people, you're gonna be, you're gonna be talking about it way before.
Before the summer.
In May, in June, and stuff like that.
You have to start.
And you're gonna, you're gonna push.
All those graphics out by back-to-school nights, so when everybody comes in.
And in light of Gabrielle's assessment, just like Mike stated, and I think.
It certainly is a matter of.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, it's, it's, yeah, it's only one percent different from December to September.
Yeah, but look at the number of referenda.
Right.
Right.
You know, you're eighty-two, eighty-two referenda instead of fifty-nine. And again, in March, you're at sixty-two. Fifty-two percent passed, April, sixty-two percent passed, but there's only twenty-two. So, those, those are the number, and the most popular month was September, followed by March. Success rates were the opposite though. So, December was sixty-one percent, September was sixty, and March was fifty-two.
I think based on our situation, we gotta consider September.
I've always felt that you have, I agree with what you just said. You have a more captured audience in September than you do in regular.
Show our full slideshow or after pictures that we wanted to do, and people will really see what we're trying to do.
Use back-to-school nights, we know people are there.
Family, there's stuff there.
Yeah, we have them there, you know, we take advantage of that time.
And we can do it early on, too.
Probably attend in that first month, and then, you know, there's that after that.
We could even, we could even, I'm thinking even back-to-school nights, we could say to them, so we wanna extend the parent meeting portion to do so this. You know, and then we're like, we're still at East of Columbus, but we're gonna start a little earlier, extend the period, extend the time a little bit. And we have, and most parents come to those meetings, those back-to-school nights.
Because you don't want to bore them.
No, I agree. Right, then we start about it, give them out.
I agree.
The only benefit about December is that it gives us a little more time, but, I mean, at this point, you just gotta commit to it and.
That could be double-edged sword though, too. You know, that time could go through right then. By December, all the, everyone's been, you know, someone's been through your house already to, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna get that vibe as that, you know, if that person leaves, you're gonna get that.
Listen, I know there's no guarantee of anything, and everybody's gonna automatically assume that everybody's taxes are going up. But didn't they have, again, a projection for the third?
The third, the third.
Has anybody's taxes ever gone down?
The third will go down.
Well, I mean, if you let a brand, say, you do, you know, kitchen put on in eighty-eight or whatever, I mean, and you let it not improve over the past, it's, there's a chance, I guess.
So, with those calculations, we're looking at two-thirds, and taxpayers will not have a negative.
Correct.
Impact.
But they're still fearful, because you don't know which third you're gonna be in.
It'll be more negative than positive, so I'm just trying to throw a little puzzle.
It doesn't mean you're gonna have a big increase in tax also. I mean, if God, if they reassessed it, it may not be a big issue this point.
When I was reading the article, it mentioned though about the county tax. So, is there a chance, and then because the whole evaluation, wouldn't then maybe that your county tax would go down?
Take it away.
I did read that part, Trudy, I think, because Patterson.
Because Patterson had to get reevaluated, once they got reassessed, you know, fourth only get reassessed, and then how much of the county tax.
Right, the portion of the county tax.
It may change as well.
The proportion of county taxes.
Well, right now, twenty-four percent of our taxes are paid on the counter. Twenty-four percent of them, like we're at fifty-five, fifty-three, twenty-one for the, for the borrower, and then twenty-four percent for the, that was last year's.
Just getting back to the selling of the referendum part, if we leave here tonight and we decide this is what we're gonna go with, and I know you said this last time, Frank, but I know, we know. If we leave here tonight and we say, this is, you know, the one we're gonna go with, how long do we send it to the D O E, like what could be the earliest date that we could start selling it for a September referendum?
We could start selling it tomorrow, but we need, you know, in terms of actual approved price, we need to go to D O E. In order for us to do that, we, if we do the visual impacts, it's gonna take us a little bit longer to do some of the design work or design exactly like that. I don't see it taking us more than three or four months to be through the design process, down D O E, and ready to go.
You're talking about April, April. Something about, in terms of getting a, I wouldn't, I wouldn't allow, I'd start telling people about it until we knew, you know, that.
I, I, there's, there's a number of things you're gonna wanna do before you start, you know, you're gonna wanna show people the need. You're gonna wanna set up walkthroughs, you're gonna wanna set up all these things that you're gonna do over the course of a couple of months. Even, you know, maybe you'll wait till the summer and do some, in the summer, but you may wanna do some of those before, you know, the end of this, end of the school year, while you have people here, you talk about the audience. So, those are things that you might wanna do, get out in front of this and talk about that need. You know, we, we do pre-referendum services, presentations, publications, backpacks, stuff, everything that goes out to the public, so that you're getting the message out. Even if you wait, you know, September, there's no, there's no problem, September's easy now. You know, where we are in our timeframe, if we had to still go out and field survey and do all the buildings and everything, I tell you, it's not happening. But September's, that's, that's fine, great. So, we just need to get out ahead and get the plan together. Or, you know, you have, you have, when you make the decision, you need to determine what you're gonna do, we're ready to go. We're ready to put together the applications, get the applications ready, put the schematics together for this. A lot of this is capital projects, so that's easier. But when we start getting into the visual stuff, well, then it's a little design on the part, but nothing that's gonna impede us giving you enough time to get the word out.
On that note, was the committee's recommendation going to be that the visual impact projects? So, along those lines, I mean, I think this has been a great conversation so far. I, most of you, not all of you, I have a strong recommendation from our, you know, our leaders, our administration. So, we have Scott, we have Trudy here, these are our chief officers, these are our leaders. As a team, would it be safe to say, if we, would you guys be comfortable with the strong recommendation being to go with the baseline projects and the visual impact package, which comes in at the twenty-three million, which then gets whittled down after the services to fourteen-three, right? Am I correct with that?
Fourteen-three, let me see, I guess, right there.
Right there.
There you go. Would that be something that you guys are comfortable with, that you strongly recommend? Off-base, is there some, some other avenue you'd like to go?
No.
Okay, so, Scott, Trudy, you guys thought something you recommend? Where do you guys fall on the second question for air conditioning? Adding in the core air conditioning is the second question. Thoughts, positive, negative? And everybody understands how the second question works, right? The first question absolutely has to pass before the second question could even have a chance.
You'll have to blow down the first question.
Correct.
I, I would say that would be, my, my opinion, that would be the only way that I would include air conditioning is in the second question. I'd be comfortable including, I, I don't see, you know, eighteen million dollars passing as a second question for oil. I just don't see that happening. So, realistically, I think if you wanted to try with the two-point-seven as a second question, I think that actually has a shot, in my opinion. I, I would say to do it as a second question, I'd be comfortable with that. But to go back to your point, like, my opinion is, I would like to do, the baseline projects we have to, that's not even an option, that's, you know, those are things that have to happen. I do think the visual impact projects will help sell it. And again, I said it falls, again, it directly impacts kids, and I'd like to see some of that. Louis, I wish you could do more of it, to be honest. But realistically, I don't think we could go any more than, than we're pushing here with that twenty-three million dollar.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
When towns go out for a second question, do you find that it's sometimes confusing? Does it confuse the taxpayers? Do they, do they get confused when, when you, excuse me, when you're selling it? Like, like, will they vote back here, you know, two million dollars, or three million for air conditioning? Forget it, I'm saying no for the project.
If this was a little bit more complicated, I could say maybe yes. But one of the things that we're gonna do in every presentation is the question's gonna be, what do I get if I vote for question one? What do I get if I vote for question two? What do I get if I vote no? And there's a chart, it's a simple little matrix. If I vote yes to both, I get air conditioning and I get all this stuff. If I vote yes to one and no to the other, I don't get the air conditioning. If I vote no to both, I get nothing. So, we'll, we'll make sure that we explain what those questions are. Even though that question is really complicated in the voting booth, we make sure that we put out interpretations so that everybody knows what those questions are, they know going in what they're gonna pick. So, we try to make it as easy as possible.
I do like the fact that the only thing that's on the second question is air conditioning. It's not overly involved, it's pure air conditioning.
I just, I'm worried about the air conditioning being misleading. And they won't understand that it's only for, this, we're talking only for, right? So, you know, I, I don't know how we can know that.
It's gonna be on us to explain it.
I mean, you, you and I both know, I mean, a man withdrew from the election a few years ago, and he's still got five hundred votes. People don't go uneducated, so we, we have to, we have to hold them back.
And you know what, we have to write that person one. You're not getting, you're not getting that fraction of the community that head will be in the sand until the day of the election.
I don't want them to think when they see, because two-point-seven million dollars for air conditioning could come across as, we're gonna air-condition everything with window air conditioners. Um, it's a lot of money, it sounds like. I understand now that it's much more money to air-condition everything, so I mean, I think if, if the second question is done, the wording has to be very particular. Common spaces, or, you know, core, or even using the words gymnasiums and media, like, using the. We have to.
Non-classroom.
I think that if you have the message, I'm, I'm sorry. If you have the message that is a coordinated message, if you have the presentation, if you have the fact sheets in front of you, you as a board are gonna make a coordinated effort to make sure that everybody's got the right answers. We're gonna do whatever meetings, you know, we need to do. But the website, you're gonna have a referendum page on the website, you're gonna have.
Social media.
Social media, going, you know, talking about all of this. So, I, I can show you, and I'll, I'll wait, but I can show you presentations we've done, you know, in the districts. Ramsey just spent forty-two-point-nine million. And I know, you know, you say we're not Ramsey, but the, the message is the same. You have to get it out, there are people in Ramsey that didn't wanna vote for the referendum anyway. You know, no matter where you are, you're gonna get people that are for it or people against it.
Different candidates.
Yeah, you have to get the message out. And I think we, we have a good vehicle to help you do that.
Sorry to interrupt, I did see Ramsey's referendum videos, is that something that you assist with, or is that something they did on their own?
No, no, we assist with the date, with the stuff for that, Ramsey actually hired a company to do that one. They hired a company to do it, but we provided the renderings and the things that they needed. But when, you know, when you see Dr. Murphy and the students, that's an independent company that they hired to do it. It's not saying we can't do it, we can certainly help facilitate it.
Just a point on the second question, I for one am gonna say no. You're right about the confusion, that's number one. Number two, we as a committee basically said, and we said it here tonight, we don't know how beneficial it really is. Number two, we as a committee basically said, and we said it here tonight, we don't know how beneficial it really is to teachers and the kids.
True.
Going into a nice gym, into a nice cafeteria, and then going into a quote-unquote hot classroom. So is it beneficial? Are people wanna also say, again, with ammunition, well, they're biting off more than they drew now, what's it? So that, I'm against it. I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm not for it, let me put it that way.
I mean, it doesn't, it will, it's.
You know, if we're, if we're not comfortable with it, how can we expect the people to be comfortable?
But even if it doesn't cool off the entire, you know, old square footage of the building, you know, there is, it will help cool off the building in itself, right, because you're gonna have that, I mean, you have an area that's air-conditioned. So I mean.
That's good.
What, also, the other, the second question, will it help us sell the referendum? Because if you have parents, you know, that are actually gung-ho about getting air conditioning in the district, will they, you know, will they rally the troops to get people out there?
Here's my.
Or could it have a negative effect? And if you only have one question, we sell one question and we kinda move forward with the major projects that we need. Will it turn people, some people off? We don't, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. Or we have more, you know, don't forget, not everybody who owns a home that pays taxes in town has children in school. So there's a lot of people that may look at that and look at the actual cost, because I know years ago there was comments about certain classrooms having air conditions in, and PTO was gonna donate to a particular school, and other people in the town said, yeah, but we're gonna have to foot the bill of the utility increase. So are we gonna, I think that, you know, we may have more of a negative impact with the second question.
It may come across as blood mitts at that point.
Here's my.
That's one thing, I think, yeah.
My concern about the air conditioning, as a parent, not as a board member, because I understand that behind the scenes on the finance committee, I get the numbers, but as a parent who is uninformed about all that, I don't, if you're gonna put air conditioning on the referendum, put air conditioning on the referendum. Put eight million dollars on the referendum and get me air conditioning in my school. Don't give me a piece of it, because if we do that, we're gonna tie our hands, we can't put air conditioning on this referendum and then maybe three, four, or five years from now, whenever the next one comes up, we might wanna do it again. Like, how many times can we say we want air conditioning?
All or nothing.
That's, my feeling is all or nothing too, I think. Because as a parent, I'm gonna look at it and gonna go, all right, yes, I'm gonna vote for air conditioning, but I'm not really gonna get what I think I want. So I think that's gonna be.
I have a question for you, you know, thanks for putting on Scott and Trudy and Rick and Scott. Because of the dollar number we're looking at for the, you know, common area, are there projects that over time, when we get fortunate and maybe get a little extra money here and there, are there things that we can do over time to give one school air conditioning and then maybe another school air conditioning?
My number's way too big.
My number's way too big, and the problem is.
No debt services.
The problem is, and we even started, I know one of the conversations a few months back was, let's start in the third floor, right? I don't think you can do that, because I think people are gonna say, well, we start in the third floor, when are you gonna do the second floor and the first floor? Like, I think people are gonna expect, kinda to, things that were mentioned here, what's your plan going forward? If you're gonna start here, where, what's the next step, and when does that happen? So I, you know, listen, I'd be, I am comfortable eliminating air conditioning altogether, just focusing on the other areas that we talked about. I just agree, yeah. I just thought if we were gonna do a second question, I would, you know, I would not put air conditioning in the first question at all. If you're gonna do it, I'd be, you know, I'd be okay with the second question. But I'm also fine with just eliminating altogether and focusing on the core projects and the visual impact projects, I'm fine with that.
One thing I'm gonna add to that, and I could go either way, second question or not, air conditioning or not. Those core air conditioning that addition, and correct me if I'm wrong, some of that is a safety issue because we're, and it's an infrastructure issue, because it's for the server rooms. We're not addressing at all. So that's just something, you know, we, those computer rooms get hot, now they're getting hot, you know, without air conditioning, you know? So it's just something to keep in our back mind. We have a meltdown in the school where, you know, we lose infrastructure because we didn't put air conditioning in the rooms of the servers. That's.
Can we leave that there?
Well, I think we do have it. If we did the second question, that's in that question, right? That's part of the board.
How much more could it be to just do server rooms?
They're all supposed to be, are they all?
They are, but right now they are air conditioning.
All the server rooms have the little Mitsubishi units in there. The problem we have is in high school where all servers are, get really hot in there. So last, what was it, last February, we had one of those really, really cold days, and they froze up. So all of a sudden, that room heats up real quick, there's no backup.
It was almost a hundred degrees in that room.
Quickly, it doesn't take long for that.
That timer was.
Was that last February or February before?
By the time I received the alerts, which was probably within twenty minutes of the systems shutting down, it was about a hundred and forty degrees in there.
That was valid.
So how do we, how do we fix that? How do we fix that?
Well, we actually talked about that, we actually had solutions come out and we discussed doing something else, just forget, we were gonna tie it together with the air conditioning for the library. If we're not gonna do that, we can certainly spill that back and just do, put another unit up there that would service that. And I think we can, if that had happened at a maintenance reserve, if it happened in a reserve. I actually circled that on my list, just because I'm looking at that, just to make sure that we didn't forget about that, because we've been talking about that. And that is important. With all this great technology, if it.
Not a second, it's not gonna be worth it.
Yeah, if it needs, we definitely need to address it, but if we can handle it in maintenance, we've got a lot to do.
And we've had, and we've had solutions out already to look at this, we've talked about this already, so.
If I may, the one question I have, though, for the existing units, you did say that they were in need of being replaced anyway, though, right? So my question is, just from an outsider, looking, is it something that then should be a part of the overall baseline? If we're saying that it's something that's going to ultimately affect, because we're looking at this more from a amenity standpoint, right? The air conditioning component. But is there a liability by not doing an upgrade on these units in general, just period? Not, not take out the air conditioning component of it, and just saying, is there a need for it to be replaced anyway? And hey, while we're at it, we're also gonna add this AC component, which is a nominal net difference to accommodate this and make it more than just what it is currently. Am I saying it?
Yeah.
So my thing is, I think it's in the, in the marketing, essentially, right? I think right now, we're so on it on the air conditioning point, but it seemed as if, and tell me if I'm wrong, but it seemed like it wasn't need anyway.
There, listen, we had to come up with a number, and that's how this whole thing started. What was the number that we felt the town would accept? I can't sit here and tell you, I can't look you in the eye and tell you that the unit ventilators in most of our schools aren't ancient and shouldn't be replaced, because I'd be lying to you.
Of course.
A lot of them are original to the schools.
But I think that speaks volumes to.
They're past their usefulness.
I think that speaks volumes to not only our decision-making here, but how we also go about it if we do approach this referendum with it included in the baseline, if you will, because that's gonna be the way we have to essentially put it out there to the public so they know that it is, it is more than just a air conditioning unit, but it's a mechanical upgrade. And I think that's a big difference, maybe a wrong.
It's an improvement to technology.
That's.
But it's a big difference with saying air conditioning, where that can be misconstrued, to your point, where I would personally say, I don't know if I'm necessarily correct.
Say yes to that.
That's true. And I do, again. I completely understand what you're saying, I do. I think Scott, what Scott was saying is, we could, I mean, you might really talk about, we could add a lot of things to this baseline that we would love to do and need to be done, and that's, that's where we were struggling. Not, you know, I'll speak for Trudy and Scott, and I, we struggled, what's done the baseline, what's not on the baseline, you know? Because there's so many that, I mean.
What was the original, fifty-four million?
Yeah, you know, facility order.
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if there were a second question, I just think the way it's put out there is, is, that's critical. And also, you know, if, if we do consider it, you know, do we wanna then go back? Because I think I remember, one of the means we even mentioned is, is, you know, do we go all in with it under the referendum? Make it that one vote so it's clearly understood? Because, again, from an outsider, first day here, is, you know, the difference between twenty-three versus twenty-six in the grand scheme, but it doesn't seem to really move the needle as much, you know, it's either an all-or-nothing kind of scenario to me. Unless we put the second question as a more detailed in the sense of a mechanical upgrade or to technology, not AC.
You kind of have a comfort issue with more mechanical.
Well, because it's really not, we're saying, we're using that, but it's really, to what I'm hearing, it's not.
That's more refrigerated.
The notice of what, all right, all right.
It's really not twenty-three to twenty-six, it's twenty-six is just core. It would be twenty-three to thirty-nine.
I'm, I'm, me personally, no disrespect, I'm not even considering the air conditioning additional in the classrooms, that's my personal approach.
But that's what we're talking about.
That's what we're talking about.
Oh, that's what you're talking about.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying.
I'm talking about the core, I was referring to the core.
Core.
And that's why from the beginning, and everybody here will tell you, I was against air conditioning from the get-go for every, anywhere, just because there is more, there's, you know, people, there's more needs than we're addressing what we think the town can afford to address right now.
Let me ask this.
There's more.
One more air conditioning question. How much money do we need to spend to make sure our technology continues to run properly? That's the question. Not, it's not two-point-seven million.
No, it's not.
Is it, you know, what, that's the question.
Yes.
Our concern here is making sure everything runs properly. So what do we need to spend to do that?
Especially for a one-to-one.
Right, that's, that's.
Pair that number down.
Right.
We talked about it, but I don't know if we ever got any further than, after you guys come out and saying, we wanna have redundancy for what's there.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely do it one more.
No, we had numbers.
No, because then they got, they just got. They just got the information.
Yeah, the server room was two things. It was the air, you know, backup air conditioning plus making sure that the gentleman, if we lost power, that our generator actually kicked that stuff on, so it actually came on, so that, it was twofold. So and that's what we originally spoke about, but I don't think we ever got to numbers or something.
But the generator is on.
No, it's not, it's a wall.
Yeah. Not the base on.
It's, yeah, it's a server. It's a server room, it's not, it's not any bigger than, put a wall up right here, and it's here. It's just one, one room, not the IDF or not.
Yeah, what about the other schools? What about the other IDF? The closets?
Well.
So in all the schools, there's, there's one IDF in every school. It's, they're each closets.
Right.
Some of them have air conditioners that are working, some of them are shaky at best. The server room is, as Scott said, if you took a wall and probably divided, you know, the, right when I put it in this across, that's probably the size of the server room. And that houses all the, the server room is the most important, because that houses all of our internet lines, home lines.
That's the, that's the whole.
Security has all of the entire, that's what we gotta protect.
That's the hub of the district, everything runs from there.
But you're saying that those funds were originally assessed under the thirteen million portion?
Or the two-point-seven.
Or if, that's why I wanna get clear.
Not under the two-point-seven.
Okay, so.
Not under the two-point-seven.
So is it in here at all?
Yes, yes.
Oh, it is, okay.
Under the biggest number.
Under the big number.
Oh, under the nine million?
Yeah, so I think I'm, so my position was.
Cool down there.
Take, take, take the air conditioning out, the core, it sounds like we're collectively saying it's a want, not necessarily a need, and therefore, do we refocus that?
Hold on, say, listen, just, Tom just brought it to my, so if you look at in the core, it is, it isn't the two-point, it's the core. But that's what we, that's what we were doing, and the library room and the server. So that number would be less if we're not doing the library. It was associated with both, in the, in the core, so in that two-point something.
But let me re-ask my question. What do we need to spend to make sure?
They wanna know what's just a server.
And everything works properly and doesn't go down. What do we need?
Can we do it? I don't know that. Can we do it without the referendum? Can we, it's something that we, so we can.
Depends on how much it is.
Now we're talking about just visual impact, baseline, and this other cost for technology.
Well, the mechanical upgrades, AC in the library and the server room?
It's three forty-seven.
Three hundred and fifty dollars.
That includes the library.
That includes the library.
So it's not gonna make a big of a difference.
For the library, I mean.
That's gonna be the biggest cost.
Sure.
Small, it's always small.
So we're talking a hundred thousand or twenty-five thousand.
Well, that's why we said we could do it out of maintenance.
A hundred thousand dollars, we can do it.
Well, I think you'd be, I think you'd be at a hundred thousand dollars for that room for the, less than that. But again, I don't know the, the level and whatnot, but a hundred thousand seems like it would absolutely be a realm possibility.
And do the other schools need it too?
Yeah, we were just talking about that. We have the Mitsubishi units, maybe they just need to be upgraded, I'm not exactly sure. That's something that, you know, I could take you to the schools and show you exactly what's there. And Tamer could show you.
But they're not, they're not connected, they're not backed up by the generator, though.
No, no, so if you lost power, just because you had more air conditioning, it's not gonna do anything.
Although, if we lost power, the servers would go down anyway.
Well, if we lost power today, the servers would stay on for about forty minutes. That was the battery backup thing that we just purchased this past summer. Each of the MDF closets in each of the buildings, they would last about an hour without power, because we have battery backup units in each of those as well. But the server room nor any of the MDFs are on any sort of backup generator.
That's what I'm saying.
If there were generator.
Like, boy, if the server room goes down.
Generator. Yes, in the base.
That would kind of like.
That would run the servers.
Equipment.
If we would again, right?
Yes.
Because without everything, without everyone was schooled.
Yeah, it can't be a hundred.
It would burn up, there's all your tech out.
So that's what we gotta make sure.
So Frank, that hundred thousand, you're saying that that would be just for the server? So now we're talking about four other schools, and we're talking about closets.
Maybe smaller. Thirty-five, thirty-five thousand.
So if we would put.
Half a million.
Right.
Two hundred thousand.
Right.
Do you get, do you get, this day, you get dead aid for that? If you don't, then we're done with it.
You, you might, I don't, if, if we, I guess it depends on how we package it. Package it as IT infrastructure and for that, mechanical ventilation for equipment.
I think it might help sell a referendum too. Like, that is something that's necessary, but we're all into technology, we all need to make sure technology works, like, that might not be a bad.
It lends to security and it lends to technology.
Like, those two hundred, so two hundred thousand dollars. Two, two fifty at most, but we keep the capital, we keep the maintenance for repairs. It's not a significant, it's not gonna achieve anything significant, right?
No, that's not gonna change these numbers. I mean, we'll look, we'll look a little closer tomorrow, because our engineers will. But we, we look at this in a different scope to provide.
Good first day, Mark.
To be very honest, like I said, Roosevelt School is probably the second biggest one, right, Tamer? The one that, the main office at Roosevelt is the next biggest IDF. Jefferson School was literally a closet.
Yeah, I would say that, yeah.
Winkin, well, Winkin in the library is.
Winkin and Roosevelt are probably about the same.
Yes, they're closets.
But they're half, they're half the size of the one in the high school.
Yeah, they're closets, they're not, they're not close to the high schools.
There's not as much equipment in there either, they don't generate as much heat.
I think everybody would be.
But I think the. If I could interrupt everybody just for a second, so crunching these numbers, and I think, I think we're at least decided, we're just crunching the numbers. So we're, we know we're at the twenty-three million mark, that's baseline probably to the visual impact, all right? We're talking about the second question, the two-point-seven, let's clarify one more time, that includes the core and cover the high school server. Does it cover the other, will it cover the closets at two-point-seven? Does it, will it cover that stuff, Scott, or that was not talked about?
No.
No.
It's not, so I know that it's right here.
It wasn't part of the initial scope for the.
So the options are either included or hand delivered, or it's a cap.
Would it be at two fifty thousand or just that? At two fifty, because it's gonna help sell it.
Sure, yeah.
From technology.
And when you think about it, priority.
Certainty, and you, so we're saying.
Well, so, so the train of thought is, we're at fourteen after debt service, or fourteen-three-nine-seven, right? Without, without the, the air conditioning, two-point-seven, yeah, right? Fourteen-three after debt service, at two-point-seven, it's one-six, looking at sixteen million, you know, the difference between fourteen-three and adding that one-six, that's a nominal, you know, not that much of a nominal difference, you know, impact to the taxpayer, okay? And what we would have to add to that to get those extra rooms done, what are we talking about? Maybe, you know, a hundred thousand to get the closets, two-fifty, so you're adding two-fifty to that, and now it's one question.
The server was included already, the line.
The high school, right.
The high school was included already, so it's another one twenty-five.
And that's the biggest, so a hundred twenty-five adding to the one-six, so you're at one-seven-eight-five. And you're back, you're at one question, and you're, you're still under seventeen million after debt service.
Yes. What original, what air conditioning included in this original project?
It's the high school.
High school, sorry, I'm.
High school.
The, the yellow sheet is only the high school. The, the yellow sheet is only the high school.
Is it top two, okay.
We're talking about the blue sheet.
So this is AC in the library and a server. Okay, so we're still gonna do the whole library then?
Well, that was in the, if you go these original.
Right, I'm just saying, I mean, this is still doing the library, this is still doing the media center.
And the gym.
And a gymnasium, okay? So it's the gym at Lincoln, the gym at Jefferson, it's a library at the high school and a cafeteria. So this is going back to the common spaces again.
Yeah, so he's, Mike's saying it's 1.7 plus an extra hundred thousand, 1.8 if we include that.
But my guess is, like in the middle school, so you're, you're including AC in the media center, we're talking about replacing the units that are there. I'm sure if we put a smaller, a little bit bigger size, it would fix, the server room is in, in the media center.
Something in there.
So I'm sure that could be part of the number that's already there.
Right, and so is Jeff, uh.
Jefferson doesn't have it in there.
Jefferson is.
So Mike, are you suggesting that 1.8 or it's more?
Jefferson too in Jefferson.
It's in the media center.
The core project, the basic project, plus the visual, plus the 1.8 number and be done.
I'm just throwing it out there, just one question.
Just one question.
To avoid that confusion and everything else. Can you sell 17.5 million after debt service?
Yeah, but remember, we're gonna be looking at. At 14.3 plus 1.7.
Okay, Frank, we're doing, right?
If you look at what I highlighted, it's the 23, which is the baseline, plus the visual impact.
Oh, sorry.
If I add the 2.783, you're getting a 25.8 number. Roughly nine million in debt service and 16.67 net.
Let me re-hit it, no, those, our numbers have changed, so, right, cause we have new numbers now.
No, I just created that.
You just did, just created that.
That's brand new. I just, I just did it now, so you would have. I was confused you.
No, 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 that's great.
So when we vote, whenever we vote to vote forward, are we voting on a number? That's a weird opinion, what, how we're gonna proceed, what are we voting on?
When I start moving forward? Yeah, and we have to vote on a, the list of projects, which we have a dollar now attached to it. And we would have with our second question, yes or no? And then when are we gonna do this, September or December? Those are the three things we need to hopefully iron out before we walk out.
And the, is the number gonna be up to, or once you put a number up there, we're committed to that number?
Numbers change, it's not.
Projects.
Key, yeah.
Well, really, projects.
Basically, if you're just voting that we're gonna do the referendum etcetera, you don't actually really vote on the numbers until we're gonna be ready for, to do the. These numbers may be tweaked a little here or there.
So we don't need to vote.
So we don't need to say, we can just say, you know, estimate, okay? Because it's gonna change a little here, not hundreds of thousands, we're talking thousands. You know, we can swing, swing one way or the other. So you're not, we're not watching ourselves, we just need to know, is it more comfortable going, you know, moving forward with a September or December, which projects we're gonna do in a rough range? That's really what we need to do.
Let's find out first if people are comfortable with the 25 million and then figure out the target. 26 million September.
Look at you there.
No, I know he had.
He took that and he put it down. I know what he did, I'm just saying, what was the second question, is that incorporating that yellow one? But I, but I thought.
Which we all, people will go against.
I thought we were off.
Right, I thought so too.
You talked about going back to it again, I'm sorry.
Well, it's okay, we need the, we need the, we need to complete it for the servers. We need that.
That's correct.
If that's.
But that's a lot more though.
That's a ton more. This encompasses common areas.
Now you got, now you got the whole thing with the common areas, and with the, with the, you know, they're gonna be there for a half hour, they're gonna go back to a hot room.
Right, 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 right.
And you know, I don't know, it's, it's still, you know, 1.6 million dollars.
Do we make an agreement or come to an understanding, do, are we in agreement?
I think we take a straw ball.
What you're saying is, is the core out or in? Cause I think that's where, that kind of defeats the purpose what I was saying, cause I thought 2.7 was out and we were just gonna concentrate on the, the server areas. Now we're only looking at maybe an add of 250, now we're at 23.25.
Correct. The library and the server room together, we had 290. For the library and the server room, total project was 347. That number is getting.
Library and the server, because they're right. That's a gross or is that net after 40%?
No, net would be 201.
There you go, bingo. But that's the library too, Lou. I understand, I'll let them make that decision. Library and server room, we're just, we're both.
Give me the straw ball, so we know where we are. I, I like to find out where we all are at least.
I think to go back, if, my opinion, if you're gonna do the library and the high school and you don't do something in the other schools, you gotta, you gotta be equitable, if you wanna put it that way, so.
And we're already doing the, the auditorium in the high school, so we're gonna do three things in the high school.
Well, I, I hear, I agree with you.
But that high school does get used by everybody as far as graduation, so that kind of covers that.
That's, that's an easier sell, you're saying it's mechanical air conditioning, not if you comfort, you wanna use that word, right? Um, to, to protect our technology infrastructure.
Which is very important.
Which is very important, which is only.
Technology.
Yeah, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars, which will cover all of our server rooms.
Add that to the 23.015 and let's move forward.
But we're back to the second, do we even need to put that into referendum? Can we do that out of, and then we're back to, we don't even, we're at 23 and we're done.
Yeah, no, that's, that's not what I was.
I, I agree.
Right, right.
But you're saving 40% by putting it in here.
And it's not a significant upgrade, but it can sell it. It can go, we need this for.
And, and the other thing too, which Rick mentioned before, you start adding one-to-one, every student in the middle school, every student in the high school, that means your capacity of your server room and all of those things, you have to add more and more to accommodate now for every single student in the middle school and high school is gonna be walking around with a Chromebook.
The worst thing that happens is they all have a device that doesn't work.
Alright, so going around the room, straw poll, alright? Baseline projects, visual impact, we're at 23 million, alright? Whatever the number's gonna be to, to do the servers, we'll add that into that. So figure 23.2, argument safe, okay? One question, referendum in September. Anthony?
Yes.
Any? Luke? Mike?
Yeah.
I'm good with it. Bruce?
Yeah.
Alex? Marco?
Adam?
Still uneasy about the auditorium, but if, if everyone else is on board.
I'm surprised at you, I thought you were dealt with, you'd be alright with that.
Yeah, I think Vic brought it off of me when he was speaking, that's what happened.
Next thing you're gonna say, you used to walk three miles in a storm.
I don't know, it's about Vincey. Anyway, uh, if, if that's the unanimous consensus then.
That's the, uh, that's the number. Everybody's good with that? Any other questions?
So it's the.
23.355. Give or take.
I can't, it's visual impact, it gets its baseline project and that gets the server room.
One question.
I'm more comfortable with this than I was with the core being it, I agree, I think we go just needs.
And it's not the last time we're gonna be discussing this topic, right?
Mostly not like this.
No, but not, not the numbers, that's it, this is the projects. The numbers may change a little bit plus or minus, but this is it, we gotta, we gotta get our foot out of gas, we're gonna go for September.
Yeah, scope wise, we have to be getting, yeah, yeah, that's right.
So.
But I really think, Rick, we gotta figure out how to sell this, we gotta be big on social media.
Well, listen, no, hold on, I was gonna say, they're gonna help us with that. And yes, I agree with you, I'm not arguing.
Make a video.
But we're gonna have to figure out, I, I already spoke to Dr. Murphy and Ramsey about the videos, him and I, I know him from my work. So he said he'll help us with whatever we need, he's happy to, you know, give us the information that he uses, the company uses, whatever.
And, and what I was gonna say is, we'll do what we did with them, we have the ability to help you guys do that. And what I'd like to do is, now that we have an idea of what, which direction we're going, we're gonna start putting our DOE apps together, but we should have a meeting about the, the, the other side of this. Which is marketing, making sure you got all the information, meetings you wanna set up, how do we wanna go about it? Setting that schedule for, you know, backing into a September referendum. So those are, those are things that I think that's our next steps. And we have a lot of work to do, but I think from your perspective, we need to get you guys all, all on the same message.
We definitely agree, yeah, we're, it's not the last time we're meeting.
No, 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 absolutely not.
And then, once we have our actual number, I will have the finance people come back in, go over everything with us as well. Once we know our actual number.
Do we want, if we're, we are going to do September, go with Lou's idea of getting it every single school, figuring out where that's gonna be for the.
At least the entrance ways, right?
Wherever the most people go.
Entrance ways, right, what do you think?
Well, I think, you know, maybe.
Chins, maybe.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I'm thinking.
Or cafeteria.
I'm just thinking, I'm thinking, if you're gonna have back to school night meetings or just general meetings, you're gonna have them in large spaces where people can sit and look at pictures and slide, you know, slide presentations. That's where you wanna have that stuff available, right?
We did a graphic that was 60 feet long on the entrance to the auditorium, which was just a gray brick wall, a block wall. We did it, you know, red velvet curtains, the whole deal, all around the door. It was such a huge impact at their school. And to lose, but we can make sure people answer through service.
Space, right. In the school room.[1686.18]